Recall the regular meeting of council Monday, August the 25th back to order. We are missing councillor Rob Martin this evening. He is away on vacation. Looking for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favour? Opposed? Motion carried? Public participation, this is the time folks, for any of you in the audience that may have something to address council, it is your chance to come and have a chat and we'll just make sure that that microphone's on. If you could state name and address and if you would rather that not be on our video process that we have going on, you can provide that to our recorder. Thank you.
Good evening, honourable mayor and councillors. My name is Nithya Harris, 3182 Humpback Road, and I prefer if the address wasn't on your webpage. Thank you. I'm a volunteer organizer with the Dogwood Initiative and I'm here to speak to item 5.1 on your agenda. Callwood is a scenic coastal community which prides itself on stewardship of natural resources, one of those being the rehabilitation of Iskway Mott Lagoon and Estuary. The effects of an oil spill off the Callwood shore would not only endanger wildlife, but marine habitat would be adversely affected for years to come. Many hours of volunteer effort from your community members on the coastline would be lost. Tourism, recreation, and economy would suffer and residents would be left to clean up with the mess for a very long time. In 2012, both the Union of BC Municipalities, UBCM, and the Vancouver Island Coastal Communities Association, VICC, passed motions opposing the expansion of oil tanker traffic through BC's coastal waters. Despite this stated opposition, the federal government recently approved with 201 conditions the Enbridge Northern Gateway Pipeline. The next project to be considered would be twinning the Kinder Morgan Pipeline to Burnaby, which will directly impact our shores by increasing tanker traffic in our waters sixfold with a potential of six times the risk of an oil spill. Given the devastating and long-lasting effects that a crude oil spill would have on BC's unique and diverse coastal communities and our marine habitat, it is critical that Callwood Council proactively and strongly restate and reaffirm its opposition to the increase of tanker traffic in BC waters. We therefore respectfully ask Callwood Council to pass the following resolution. Whereas a crude oil spill would have devastating and long-lasting effects on BC's unique and diverse coast, which provides critical marine habitat and marine resources that sustain the social, cultural, environmental, and economic health of coast and First Nations communities. And whereas citizens of BC, particularly those living in coastal communities and First Nations communities, have expressed well-founded concerns over the expansion of oil pipelines and oil tankers, therefore be it resolved that Callwood opposes the expansion of oil tanker traffic through BC coastal waters and be further resolved that Callwood urge the premier of BC, the leader of the official opposition, and members of the Legislative Assembly to use whatever legislative and administrative means that are available to stop the expansion of oil tanker traffic through BC coastal waters. Thank you.
My name is Teri Dance-Bennig and I'm a volunteer regional organizer with Dogwood and the Let BC Vote campaign. And I'm also a retired college vice president. And I would like to support the motion that Nithya Harris has just proposed concerning oil tanker traffic off our coast. And I particularly want to say that I really admire the leadership that the Callwood Council has given in the past few years around sustainable energy and protecting our coast. I think you're leading the way, so congratulations. I live in a condo with a view of the Strait of Wanda Fuka. And along with thousands of other residents who live along the coast, I'm, would be directly impacted by an oil spill. And especially if Kinder Morgan is approved. As Nithya mentioned, the traffic would increase by six times if their proposal is approved in the future. And that would be carrying much heavier oil than the tankers are right now. And when you put that in the context of three-quarters of the west coast marine traffic right now passes through the strait, passes through the Gulf Islands, it, to me, that means we just simply can't afford more tankers. And one of the things that really struck me in January, I read Transport Canada's report, was quoted in the Times-Colonist, and even Transport Canada came right out and said, quote, "The risk of an oil spill is very high for the southern tip of the island if Kinder Morgan is approved." And then it goes on to say the same scenario for Kitimat if Enbridge goes ahead. And the oil that's being shipped is not for us, it's for Asia. And what concerns me is when I look at municipalities like Callwood and others, we would be on the hook for the cleanup. We've been told that we would have to wait 72 hours for a response from the Western Canada Marine Response Corporation. And Alaska is still cleaning up after the Exxon Valdez 25 years later, and they had one-third the amount of oil that the Kinder Morgan tankers would be carrying. So our stance is that no level of spill response is adequate and would be sufficient to respond to an oil spill. And there's a danger in being bought off by false promises that it's world-class, et cetera. Many, many scientists have now come out and put their names on the record or saying that's simply not true. And the prospect of a few spill recovery jobs, I don't buy it. It's easy to feel despair. I spent two weeks tracing the Athabasca River last fall, ending up in Fort McMurray and Fort Mackay. And when I saw firsthand the devastation of the land and the water and the effect on the First Nations, I came back depressed for sure. And it was like, what can one person do? What can one municipality do? Recently, though, I'm really encouraged. I look at Kitimat, city of Vancouver, Burnaby, and I think they are giving marvelous leadership. And they've shown some real courage and real determination. No means no in their books. The Let BC Vote campaign, of which I'm a part, has gathered now 212,000 signatures across BC in support of a citizens' initiative that would give British Colombians the right to vote on expanded oil pipelines and tanker traffic on our coast. In the riding of Wanda Fuka, that I'm responsible for, 4,000 people so far have signed our pledge. The Machosan Council this time last week passed a similar motion to the one that's presented here tonight, and the soup council will do, likely do the same thing on September the 8th. We're also going to be focusing on the upcoming municipal elections because this is where the buck stops. It's at the local community level. And we intend to survey and possibly endorse candidates who are willing to stand up for BC and to protect our coast, and will urge our supporters to vote accordingly. So thanks again for letting us come and speak and for being, I think, one of BC's most progressive municipalities. And I look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Any other members of our public? We almost got a full house here tonight. See, last chance? Can't hide over the microphone back there, Dwayne. All right, we shall move forward then, folks. Mayor's message, I have just a welcome back to all of council with our brief break. It went by rather quickly on my account, I think, and most everybody else. So I hope you enjoyed your summer, staff as well. I do have a piece of correspondence here from Green Communities Committee that came in early part of August. On behalf of the Joint Provincial Union of BC, UBCM, Green Communities Committee, we would like to extend our congratulations for your successful efforts to measure and reduce your corporate greenhouse gas emissions for the 2013 reporting year. So we get to, again, put our sticker out and deal with that. So a press release has been prepared and released, I understand, through our communications department. So that's out and about. Upcoming events, there are the Ovarian Cancer Society, or Ovarian Cancer Canada is having a walk on Sunday, September 7th for ovarian cancer. It's usually held at Royal Roads starting at 10:00 a.m. in the morning. And also on September 14th, University of Victoria will be hosting the ALS Walk at 11:30 in the morning. That's in conjunction with the ALS fundraiser that's going on, Ice Bucket Challenge, to which I was duly challenged and ice bucketed yesterday. So I was still shivering, I think, late last night. So the challenge is on. I have yet to see our fellow mayors, John Rans and Stu Young, out there doing it, but they were also challenged. That's about it. Anybody from council got anything to add for over the summer? Yes, no? We're all good? Alrighty. So we'll move on then. Adoption of the minutes for regular meeting of council July 14th. Public hearing July 14th.
We've adoption, your worship?
Second.
All those in favour? Opposed? Motion carried? Receipt of the Report of Public Hearing bylaw number 1545, July 14th. Transportation and Public Infrastructure, July 7th. Special Committee of the Whole, March the 7th. Special Committee of the Whole, April 4th. Planning and Land Use, June 24th. Planning and Land Use, July 2nd. So moved.
Second.
All those in favour? Opposed? Motion carried? Item 5.1, email correspondence from Ms. Harris on the Let BC Vote campaign. You have that, copy of that email and proposed resolution? Counsel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This was originally forwarded to me and I thought it was appropriate to add to this agenda. I think we have passed something very similar before as a council, but I thought this was a good opportunity with the campaign going on to put it in front of council again and see if they're willing to update that motion, also knowing that this was going to other local municipalities. I think it is something that's important to us. We have a gorgeous coastline. It's worth protecting. It's a huge impact, obviously, on our community and our developers if anything were to happen. So I think it is an appropriate motion and I would move, so move.
Second, your?
Second.
Discussion, councillor Lukens?
Thank you, your worship. I'm not going to be supporting this actually, and not because I don't believe it or I don't want to protect my coast. I'm also directly impacted as I live right on the lagoon. But the other side of it is, we are all impacted by what decision is made. And not that I support either Kinder Morgan or Enbridge going forward, trust me. I believe a solution of getting to yes needs to be found because we all keep our hands out, the dollar keeps getting downloaded to us as municipal municipalities. So, and there's only one taxpayer. So we need to figure out a way strategically in order to continue the revenues growth, not just in BC, but right across Canada. And in the end, we will all win. So the conversation for me is bigger than just saying no to this. I, you know, absolutely do not support seeing an oil spill, trust me. But I also believe that further conversation has to happen beyond just what's before us. And I don't know that I've heard a lot of what that sounds like. So I can't support this without being able to know that there's a solution for the other side of it.
Councillor Harvey? Solomon?
Thank you.
I'll get it right yet.
It's only been three years.
Turn it out, turn that way.
What's that?
Turn that name to my way. There we go.
I just had a question, point of clarification hopefully through our CAO, about jurisdiction in these matters. I know the federal government has jurisdiction, provincial government has jurisdiction. Do municipalities have jurisdiction?
It's a strong voice in the process, although there's no direct jurisdiction, we do have a voice in that process.
Thank you.
Any others? Counselor Day?
I'll just say that I do thoroughly support this resolution going forward. And I do recognize that we need industry and we need economic growth in BC. I just don't think we need to do it with coal or heavy crude. Plain and simple, there has to be another way. There's too much at stake. Potential losses are so much greater than the potential benefits that I will be absolutely supporting this.
Seeing no other hands in the air, call the question. All those in favour? Opposed? Motion carries? Item number 6.1 under Planning and Land Use, Report Director of Planning with input from Oksana Dexter in regards to our Arts and Culture Centre.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to introduce Oksana Dexter, Cultural Planning Associate with Cities Consultants, Sixty Dollar Associates. And I'd like to also say a big thanks to our volunteers that have come out tonight. Oksana will be introducing them as potential new members of an arts centre working group. I'd also like to ask that come back to staff after Oksana is done because we do have two actual items on the report. Thanks.
Good evening, your worship and councillors of Callwood. I'm going to be presenting an interim report on the work that Schickshiner and Associates was commissioned following the completion of the feasibility study. And I do apologize that we're halfway through the process as opposed to as we had initially planned to be at the end of our process, at the end of August. However, I had some personal family things that put a kibosh on my constant attention to the project. However, the exciting part is that as a result of the delay, serendipity stepped in and we were able to engage and involve and get the passionate commitment of a number of people in the community who are willing to stand as a working group to move this project forward. And in the end, that is probably the biggest and the hardest task is to find a group of individuals who understand the scope and the enormity of the task and also are willing to commit their time and volunteer effort and their expertise to this project. So I've spent quite a number of, quite an amount of time talking and interviewing a number of people through the community. And so I'm thrilled to introduce our working group members. The first is a name that is very familiar to you, of course, is Cindy Moyer, who is President of the West Shore Arts Council and is working now as the Executive Director of MESA as well. She has been passionate about this project and has been talking about it for numerous years and is quite willing and interested in working alongside this working group to continue this project and see it to fruition. Ray Parks is a retired provincial, from the provincial government after 32 years of service. His experience with government is extensive, both in scope and scale. And he served as the CEO of the British Columbia Provincial Capital Commission, Commissioner of British Columbia Human Rights Commission, and Senior Project Manager for Facility Services. So I think his skills and his knowledge in that area will be very useful to us. We're happy to welcome Duke Lee, who is currently the Chief Financial Administrator Officer for Oceans Network Canada at the University of Victoria. And he has extensive board experience both as a board member and a financial executive. And he has already brought a lot of that skill to our early planning in terms of finding a clear path forward in some of our strategic planning conversations. David Stokes, who many of you will know because he's been an active member in Callwood as a member of the Rotary Club. And he has worked for IBM. He has a lot of management experience. And being retired in Callwood is keen and anxious to add his skills to this process. And then Christine Chase, who is originally from Willabunce, Saskatchewan, came to Callwood with her husband, fell in love with the place, and they now are permanent residents here. She has served with the Mackenzie Art Gallery as a volunteer and has served as coordinator for a number of volunteer organizations. And we feel that her personal passion as a person interested in the arts is going to add a lot to our group. The group has already met numerous times and the energy in the room takes my breath away. I have to tell you, it is just absolutely wonderful. We're working on establishing and clarifying the vision for the project and making sure that it meets the community needs as the communications happened during the feasibility study. We're looking at identifying criteria for the final site selection and we're just excited as the Dickens to know that there are a couple of opportunities already. So that gives the project some reality. It's not just, well, maybe somewhere out there. There actually is a possibility that there are some places where it could go. We're looking at developing a communications plan so that once we have a case for support written and ready to go, we have an ability to start to draw other members of the community that we know are interested and other partnerships into this process that will help us move forward. And finally, I will be working on a fundraising readiness report that will be part of the final deliverable in this project. Are you? Any questions that I can answer if you have to.
Does council have any questions about Oksana at this time? We're good. You may be called back. Ian?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the staff report goes over a recommendation relating to the creation of the working group. The working group has been conceived as a non-statutory committee. It wouldn't fall under the bylaws that govern committees at City Hall. That is for a good reason, that this committee can work independently and go after some money and dollars that we need to see put to the table or brought to the table for this project. And obviously, there's some issues if within our committee structure there's councillors sitting on that group and going after money, there's potential conflict there. It also gives them the opportunity to work independently and be quite nimble on their feet when the opportunity arises to meet and whatnot. So the recommendations that are put forward are firstly, that council endorse the creation of the Callwood Performing Arts Centre Working Group as a non-statutory committee to work in partnership with the city of Callwood to pursue the development of the Callwood Performing Arts Centre. Secondly, that council designates Mayor Hamilton as Callwood City Council Liaison with the Callwood Performing Arts Centre Working Group. Thirdly, that council designates the Director of Planning or his delegated representative as Callwood City Staffs Liaison with the Callwood Performing Arts Centre Working Group. And lastly, that council authorize the Chief Administrative Officer and the mayor to enter into a contract extension agreement with Schickshiner and Associates such that Schickshiner and Associates' services are retained at no additional cost to the city until February 27th, 2015. Thank you.
I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Council discussion? Councillor Lukens?
Thank you. Item number four talks about a press release and public notifications. I just wonder if Sandra's in the loop on this.
Absolutely.
Okay. And I also want to say thank you. It's nice to get an update. It's great to hear that the momentum is still running and we've got such great players willing to step up to the plate and be part of this exciting opportunity for the entire community and the region. Thank you.
Anybody else? Counselor? Collington?
Thank you. I just wanted to echo councillor Lukens. This is exciting to see this moving forward. And I think we're very blessed to have all of you helping us. Thank you for your contributions. And looking forward to lots of future reports to council with exciting news.
Anybody else?
I'd like to say Cindy, it's starting to take shape. We, you know, we, like, I mean, we've been at this for a long time. And, you know, it is absolutely, I've been at, you know, some of those meetings and it is just energy bouncing around in that room. And I think that the team that's been assembled here really has a lot of credibility and strength to carry this through. You know, it's going to be one of those things, we could never have done it without you at the end of the day. So, you know, council made that critical step forward in providing those funds for that feasibility study to take place. And, you know, Duke, you had applied for committee involvement, you know, with a keen interest and there wasn't a place at that time. And, you know, your resume of accomplishments sat at my desk side for a long time. And this came along and it was like, hey, Oksana, I think you need to call him. You know, so it's, I see it working out well and I appreciate all your efforts in moving this forward. So looking forward to it. It's been at minimal cost to the city thus far. And I think we've gotten a tremendous amount of progress so far, so good on you.
So we have a recommendation and motion in front. No further questions? Call the question. All those in favour? Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on then to 6.1.2, Report Director of Planning, Submission Draft on Callwood Economic Development Strategy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Another exciting thing to share with council is our draft economic development strategy. Yes, save your applause for the end, yeah? So this is a really, really exciting step in Callwood's history here. And we're very unique in the region to have such a professional and in-depth and holistic economic development strategy. We can give ourselves a pat on the back for, you know, taking that professional Council initiated this process by setting up the Callwood Economic Development Strategy Working Group. And this strategy is a product of their hard work as well as the efforts of our consultants, Millie Dickinson-Blais, and a myriad of community members which, who also contributed to the project. I also want to say a big thanks to everyone who's been involved. The strategy as we see it is very much an action-oriented strategy. And that was direct from council, our direction to have it as something that we can really sink our teeth into, implement without that much, you know, thought or continual studies and analysis. And that's what we saw as some of the failings of other regional examples. Really, there's a lot of talk without a lot of action, but not in this case. So there's four strategic priorities flowing from those strategic priorities which deal with making economic development a core service of the municipality, and also to make sure that we're ready for investment through different opportunities, and that we strengthen the planning framework and fiscal planning of the municipality. And thirdly, that we enhance Callwood's quality of place. And lastly, that marketing investment of Callwood and its brand is another core strategy of the city. And from those priorities, we have 24 specific actions. I won't list them all, but some of the major ones include the hiring of Economic Development Manager, the creation of a downtown revitalization plan, an emphasis on improvement of the quality of place here in Callwood, which is seen as a key economic driver, the creation of a website dedicated to business development, the creation of a land and building inventory, which would be an excellent way to connect with investors and business owners looking for a place to set up business. To look at revitalization tax exemptions beyond what council has already looked at. So going beyond in terms of what we can use as carrots to development. And then other numerous actions, including the development of a business guide to help people with key specific city tasks such as planning development services. people with key, specific city tasks, such as planning and development services. So I'll just go through staff's recommendation. The recommendation basically is a way forward for implementation of the strategy. It would provide the next several weeks for the public and council to make comment, and we'd bring it back at the end of September with the main consultants there to answer questions of public and council. And we're also leaving, proposing that the implementation matrix that's contained within Appendix G of the report be left so that it can be populated with the proper resources and responsibilities that would be intertwined with the creation of Economic Development Strategy, excuse me, Economic Development Standing Committee, and any strategic planning work that the incoming council wants to do. So, staff's recommendation is as follows: that council receive the draft Callwood Economic Development Strategy as presented, and direct staff to make a draft, the draft Callwood Economic Development Strategy available for public comment until September 19th, 2014, and bring report to council summarizing any comments prior to potential adoption in September 2014. Thank you.
I'll move the recommendation.
That's my vote.
Thank you, Worship. Absolutely a job well done. I think the whole group has done a phenomenal job in bringing this to fruition, and there's a hell of a lot of information in that document to sift through. And I think what's just as important as that document itself is the implementation plan and the council's buy-in and dedication in the five-year financial plan to actually make that implementation plan a reality. And, you know, sometimes we have these plans on the shelf, and we don't act on them. And I think that's going to be one of the most crucial parts, I think, with this plan is actually getting some feet under it and letting it fly. So I look forward to that stage. Thank you.
Counselor Lucans, and then Collington.
Thank you, Your Worship. I think this is one of the legacies that this council will be able to have with the economic development plan, as well as the transportation master plan, the sewage master plan. There's a number of things that we have instituted and undertaken and have been very keen on having legs, so not just sitting on the shelf. So I commend staff and council that has been involved in this process. I thank you, because I know it's been a lot of work. I have great confidence in the consulting company that we hired. I really appreciated their participation, engagement, and opportunity for feedback. And the most exciting thing for me, and I know I've said this for three years, the implementation plan, the fact that we're allocating resources and going to, you know, designate a property, really excites me. So, excellent. It's from, taking it from step one right through to the very end, and the execution and ownership is half of that. Thank you.
Counselor Collington?
Thank you. Echo, thanks to the great work of the team. There's a lot of really good stuff in here. I know that Counsel Logan is really excited about this one, because it finally talks about streetscapes and improvements, and, good on you. They were listening to you, Gordy. Sounds good. The other thing I really like about this report is I think it does a good job of reminding us that we are going to have to, as a community, are going to have to put some money into making this happen, but that that money is an investment in our future. And so I think it's a really good way of saying, this is important, these things are important to do, because they will help us to build the kind of community that we want. We've got really good bones in this community. This really helps us to put some good flesh onto it. So, thanks to all involved, and I hope we get good comment and input from the public over the next little while.
Counselor Daye, Counselor Sullivan?
Thanks. I just wanted to add just the smallest of points, which is that, as well as being a very professional document that provides a substantive amount of information both about our community and about our region, I really applaud the fact that this has been brought forward with a respectful amount of time for the public to offer their feedback and have their input. So rather than just having the top-down approach of, here's what we think would be good for Callwood, there is a very much an inclusive method for bringing this forward. So I think that speaks volumes for the administration here in terms of how they feel the importance of public input is as our local experts and the people who will have to live with and carry out what's being designated in the document. So I just say, it's a wonderful, wonderful piece of very engaging. I've looked at a lot of economic development across the province since I've been attending UBCMs since 2002, and I used to think, how did all those other little communities have an economic development officer, and we don't? So finally, we're actually seeing some real effort put into not just a reactive, you know, what will the community bring to our table, but how can we put that all together and give it a push forward to help? So, great that we're involving the public and that we actually have it all in one great document.
Counselor Sullivan?
Thank you. And I'd like to actually single out one person in particular who has held the lead on this all the way through, and that's Ian, our Director of Planning. He's done a tremendous job engaging with our consultants, engaging with the community, engaging with council and the working team. So I just wanted to say thank you very much. One of the things that also excites me about this plan is that we were going to be asking the standing committee members to drop an implementation plan. And the reason we did that is to get ownership, not just of the standing committee, but also it's going to be another opportunity for us to engage our public and to get feedback on that implementation plan. So the whole community owns this. It's not just council. So I'm thrilled with it. I'm happy with the outcome, and let's push forward.
It's our OCP of economic development. Anyways, again, echoing all of council's thanks, it's a job well done, and please pass that along to our consultants, who, you know, lived up to every bit of what they claimed to be able to do. So it was, it's a good thing. Recommendations on the table? Call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? 6.1.3 Development Variance Permit DVP Resolution, 3436 Resolution Way. Recommendations is? Counselor Lucans?
Thank you, Your Worship. This application is regarding increasing the maximum allowable floor area ratio requirement from 0.4 to 0.5 in Section 5.6.071, increasing the maximum allowable lot coverage requirement from 35% to 37.5% in order to facilitate the construction of a single-family dwelling. We have had a number of these requests come forward due to variances, and they have been approved. In particular, this applicant is a person that requires the modifications. As the room's being quite small, she needs to do some reorg with respect to getting laundry services upstairs due to some conditions she has. So that was her reasoning for wanting this. She is not requesting variances for setbacks or anything. She's still within the buildable space. So it was supported by council, and I so recommend to council, it was, it was supported by committee, sorry, and I recommend to council, sorry, out of practice. The Development Variance Permit, number DVP 14005, be authorized for issuance, which would have the effect of varying the maximum allowable floor area ratio requirement pursuant to Section 5.6.054 of the Land Use Bylaw Number 151 from 0.4 to 0.5, and B, the maximum allowable lot coverage requirement pursuant to Section 5.6.071 of the Land Use Bylaw Number 151 from 35% to 37.5 on the property described as strata lot 32, Section 63, Esquimalt District Strata Plan VIAS 7142, at 3436 Resolution Way.
Second.
I've been practicing for six weeks.
Second.
Comments, questions? Seeing none, call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Next item is 6.1.4 Development Variance Permit DVP 14006 for 642 Jadel Drive.
Thank you, Your Worship. This application is requesting the varying section of 5.6.061 of the Land Use Bylaw Number 151, increasing the minimum allowable front yard setback requirement from 7.5 to 6.6 meters, and Section 5.6.062B decreasing the minimum allowable flanking side yard setback requirement from 6.0 meters to 2.6 meters in order to facilitate, in addition to the southern side of the existing single-family dwelling. It was noted by the Director of Planning that there was an error in the staff report if you happen to look at the PLU committee report. In Section 1 summary, Section 2.4, the setback variances, and Section 6, the recommendation references, the minimum allowable flanking side yard setback is pursuant to Section 5.5.062B of the Land Use Bylaw. It was incorrect, and it should have read that both of them were Section 5.6.022B of the Land Use Bylaw. So just if you happen to read that report, the recommendation was different than what was in the report. The question did come up by one of the committee members that they probably were not on sewers and asked if the Island Health Authority had been contacted. They had not at that point, but realized that it needs to be part of the process in order for them to get approvals. It was noted that it, that does not affect the approval process of council in going through this, because they have to have that in order to move forward. Like I said, there was also brought up, they have a hedge in the front of you've been by the property, that we requested that it be retained, but it was noted by the director that it would be difficult to enforce the condition as requested by the Development's Varian Permit. But the owner did indicate that they were hoping to be able to retain it as best as possible, because it benefited them as well. So the recommendation to council and ISO move that the Development Variance Permit, number DVP 14006, be authorized for issuance as amended, which would have the effect of varying the minimum allowable front yard setback requirement pursuant to Section 5.6.061 of the Land Use Bylaw Number 151 from 7.5 meters to 6.6 meters, and the minimum allowable flanking side yard setback requirement pursuant to Section 5.6022B of the Land Use Bylaw Number 151 from 6 meters to 2.6 meters on the property described as Lot 1, Section 68, Esquimalt District Plan 22017 at 642 Jadel Drive.
Move recommendation?
Seconded? Didn't Counselor Lucans move it?
Yeah, I moved it.
Oh, she seconded? You said move. That's what I caught. Comments, conversation? Seeing none, call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? 6.1.5 Official Community Plan Land Use Bylaw Amendment, OCP 14001 and RZ 14003, 2350 and 2356, Suk Road.
Thank you, Your Worship. This applicant has applied to amend the OCP designation and zoning of the properties in order to accommodate a mixed-use development containing 350-square-meter fitness center on the lower floor, 321 square meters of commercial space on the main or the street-level floor, and four residential apartment units on the upper floor while keeping the existing residence at 2350 Suk Road. The applicant has agreed to contribute $2,500 per unit in excess of four to the Community Amenity Fund, $2,000 per unit in excess of four to the Attainable Housing Fund, and $500 per residential unit in excess of four to the Fire Hall Fund. The planner concluded, in addition to the required frontage improvements, that the applicant will work with the city to construct a sidewalk across the property's frontage and down Veterans Memorial Parkway to the bus stop, which will be and will include a letdown sidewalk for wheelchair accessibility. Where this discussion came up was the subdivision servicing bylaw, which I know is on the, tonight's agenda, but with respect to requiring more than just sidewalks of improvements. And it was asked that staff clarify, and the Director of Planning didn't have further details on that. And one of the concerns, main concerns out of that conversation, was a comment in the report that mentions the city being asked to cost-share in just the sidewalks, which is not something that we typically do unless the sidewalks are proposed to be extended beyond the frontage of Suk or Veterans. And they had concerns regarding the frontage improvements and how much the city would have to pay, because it wasn't documented, and it said up to 50%, which we know this council doesn't do up to anything. So that just didn't fly. So that's where that concern came from, and it was discussed, and I know the planner was taking it away to get further information. The recommendation, in the end, was that the official community plan and rezoning amendment, sorry, I should say, that was recommended to council and ISO move, that the OCP and zoning amendment bylaws, including provisions for contributions to the Community Amenity Fund in the amount of $2,500 per unit in excess of four, a contribution to the Attainable Housing Fund in the amount of $2,000 per dwelling unit in excess of four, and contribution of $500 per residential unit in excess of four to the Fire Hall Fund, be prepared such that if and when provisions are made in a registrable development agreement for the following conditions, consideration will be given to the adoption of the amendment bylaws. I'm not going to read through each of these. There's drainage, there's site access, which was a discussion as well, energy efficiencies, which is 84 at this point in time, yada, yada, right through to H. And then it says that council direct the applicant to work with staff to explore options for increasing an amount of open space on the properties in order to meet Policy 19.11.7 and submit revised plan showing the result prior to public hearing. And if need be, Council, or Director of Planning can speak to that. And that council directs staff to determine the location extent and estimated cost of proposed sidewalk construction reference in Item 12 under frontage improvements, and present this information with a recommended amount of cost-sharing to be borne by the city prior to the public hearing.
Whoo. Discussion? Counselor Collington?
Thank you. I'm supportive of the application. I just, can planning or engineering help me understand the frontage improvements piece? Because normally, that comes through Transportation Committee. I'm not sure whether it has to happen at this stage or at a later stage.
There's a bit of confusion here. This was brought up too early, because the rezoning process doesn't trigger frontage improvements. So you can rezone a property, and you have no obligations to do frontage improvements. The frontage improvements would be triggered by either subdivision or by a building permit, and those are processes that come later. It's always useful to discuss frontage improvements if you're trying to balance, well, what should the, what should the city require of the developer? And in this case, the frontage improvements are right around two sides of the property, which is right from the eastern boundary to the bus stop, and that's a pretty heavy burden of frontage improvements for a small development. But, but the requirements for frontage improvement come later at building permit.
So is it, I guess, looking at, again, either planning or engineering, is it appropriate to leave the wording in at this point in time, or should it be pulled and discussed later?
Well, I think, it seems to me that we should leave the wording the way it is and have this all discussed in the, in the next report at the next stage.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Daye?
So my question is, I'm not sure who best can answer it, probably planning, but would you be entertaining a rezoning application for a landlocked piece of land?
Through the chair, potentially. I can think of one case in my experience where that was contemplated. But generally speaking, access is a prerequisite for development approval through the building code and other rules.
So my concern with looking at this development is the comment specifically by the Department of Highways, and the fact that the access is basically in the right-hand turn lane from Suk Road onto VMP. There's also transit, obviously, coming in to a bus bay area laneway there. There's a lot of competing traffic, and while I don't have any difficulty with, you know, the proposal per se to put in some the proposal per se to put in some commercial development and a gym, it all sounds great, but you have to tell me how people get in and out before I can say that's a good idea. And I do not see anything that indicates to me how people get in and out. Even if you contemplate only a right-in, right-out and put up some sort of barrier on Suk Road, that is potentially a problem for emergency services. I've seen numerous ambulances coming through that particular intersection where there's so much traffic that they definitely have to be able to pull out into the oncoming lane to negotiate that intersection towards Suk, or in this case, actually, towards Langford. But further down Suk Road, they have to cross Veterans Memorial Parkway. In order to do that in rush hour traffic, they have to go into the oncoming lanes. So even if you contemplated a right-in, right-out access for that property, there are significant problems that perhaps could be dealt with through some other acquisition. But I just don't see how that works.
Carol?
Call upon the Director of Engineering to elaborate if he feels the need to. But going back some time ago, the applicant came forward with the proposal, and staff were willing to work with him and the Ministry of Transportation in full knowledge that provincial legislation gives the Ministry of Transportation the hammer on this rezoning. They can say whether this lives or dies. So it is critical that safe access is provided, and city staff felt that it is possible with significant modifications to the highway there.
Yeah, I think it's probably likely that the Ministry of Transportation would require a report from a traffic engineer before they'd approve anything. So I'm anticipating that's the way it'd go.
And I want to say that it was discussed extensively, Counselor Day, at the committee with respect to this. And I'll leave it to the Director of Planning to elaborate further the work that the developer himself has done with the Ministry of Transportation in order to even get it this far, and to have any, you know, glimpse of hope that he would be able to proceed. And if not, he probably wouldn't have brought this forward. So there has been extensive work done. And it's not noted in the comments or the report that this was discussed at length at the committee regarding that because we expressed the same concerns.
Anybody else? Recommendation before us? Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Item number 6.1.6, rezoning application, 1830 Island Highway?
This proposal is to revise section 7.3.01 of the land use bylaw number 151 to add daycare as regulated by the Community Care and Assisted Living Act as permitted use in the district commercial C3 zone because an owner of the property located at 1830 Island Highway brought the absence of the daycare as a use in that zone to staff's attention and stated that the situation limits the potential of his commercial property. The Director of Planning added that, given the importance of daycares in the community and the fact that other similar commercial zones already include daycare as a permitted use, staff felt appropriate that the committee consider allowing daycare as permitted use broadly across the C3 zone, and any issues such as the availability of outdoor place-based parking and building code compliance will be addressed through application of provincial childcare licensing regulations by the Island Health Authority, as well as municipal business license and building permit approvals. There was a recommendation to council and ISO move that a text amendment bylaw be prepared to amend section 7.3.01 of the land use bylaw number 151 to add daycare as regulated by the Community Care and Assisted Living Act to the list of uses permitted in the district commercial C3 zone.
Second.
Question? Counselor Day?
Thank you. I think there are some implications to this in terms of the suitability of some sites. However, I think that what we're trying to regulate is the suitability in commercial and industrial areas. And certainly, it's probably not going to negatively impact any business, possibly positively impact them having a daycare there. So I don't believe there's any harm in that. It might not be the best place for a daycare, in which case I'm sure they'll find a better location if that is true, through the natural business process. But I also want to advise council that there is a documented study on daycare spaces in the West Shore that was done through Pacific Center Family Services Association, and it found a critical lack specifically for the youngest children. I'm trying to remember the age group that was particularly lacking. I believe it was zero to three years. And throughout View Royal, having a huge deficiency, as well as Colwood and Langford also having the same issues. A real crunch out there in terms of appropriately licensed daycares. And there are statistics available for that.
Anybody else? Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Moving on to Finance and Admin, 6.2.1, report Director of Admin, Christmas closure proposal.
For the past 15 years, council has approved the closure of the city offices over the Christmas period. This practice has been accepted by the public with proper notice of the closure posted well in advance at all facilities. Further, the council's support for this proposed closure would mean that staff must use vacation or timely leave to cover the closure days not covered by statutory holiday entitlements, so there are no financial implications to this request. Based on the stats and the policy closures, the dates for this year's Christmas closure being proposed would be from the Wednesday, December 24th, through to Friday, January 2nd, with the offices opening again on Monday, January 5th.
Who's the other recommendation?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Report Municipal Bylaw Enforcement Officer, unsightly premises at 3244 Wishart Road. Are we going to take care of that?
Your Worship, I apologize. I didn't realize I'd be presenting this. I thought I was just here for questions, but that's okay. So a complaint was received with the captioned property, 3244 Wishart Road, with respect to it being unsightly in contravention of unsightly premises, bylaw number 715, 2003. We did inspect the property. We found all manner of refuse and tools and, I think, the pictures that are attached to the report basically speak louder than any words could. We have had previous contact with this owner. This is the third unsightly premise complaint that we've had here. We have given a lot of latitude in the past, unfortunately, the owner just doesn't seem to be able to keep up and manage the mess. So what we're looking for is for council to pursue it to the unsightly premises, bylaw number 715, direct the owner of 3244 Wishart Road to remove the cardboard boxes, old newspapers, plastic containers, and miscellaneous refuse and garbage from the premises within 14 days after delivery of notification, and feel it to comply results with the city or its agents doing the work at the owner's expense. We have had an estimate done. Probably be between $16,000 and $3,000 was the figure that we received, and the property owner was notified by hand-delivered letter of this evening's meeting. I can see that he hasn't shown up. And I was there this afternoon to see if any progress had been made. A little bit of progress had been made in the front, but for the most part, it's pretty much as you're seeing.
I'll move the recommendation.
Counselor, discussion?
Holy crap, pretty much sums it up.
Counselor Day? Just a question in regards to, we know that people who are sometimes unwell, maybe overwhelmed with these situations, and are there any supports that have been put in place for the owner?
Well, during the last complaint that we had, usually we give about a 30-day timeline for someone to bring the property into compliance. I handled the last file, and it ended up being more like closer to three months. So a lot of latitude was given. We would stopfire regularly, sort of give him support, say, you know, "Good job, keep going, we'll give you that extra bit of latitude." And we took his, I believe that the property owner is probably maybe unwell, and not knowing his condition, but we took that into account. That being said, he just met compliance, and then within a few months, he slipped back. So we're still fighting the same battle, unfortunately.
So I guess I'm just wondering if there's any possibility that we could find some sort of service through VHA or someone to assist this person because they're clearly having some issues?
I would be open to that. I wouldn't know where to look. I mean, we can contact VHA and certainly see. That's something I'd be open to. The gentleman is very polite, very cooperative with us. He just can't seem to handle a property.
Yeah, it can be very overwhelming, and certainly with health issues especially can complicate it.
And I will say, if council will entertain the prospect of waiting this or putting it on hold, I'm just looking to see if I have that card because there is a service provided. I have given the contact information to our fire department, and they are aware. But I will also look for Matt's number and call him myself. He's a Sanich police officer who has been seconded to this mental, community mental health team that does this in their scope of work. So he's kind of a one-man show, but, you know, definitely on this kind of thing, the right kind of personality, the right kind of individual to be that non-confrontative, you know, contact. So I would like the opportunity to, you know, have him engage with this through bylaw as a next step before we take a more harder line to it, so.
If I may, Your Worship and Counselor Day, I think that is an excellent idea. There's been quite a few files similar to this where, you know, we know that the people, you know, they're not 100%. And we do give latitude, but at the end of the day, they need more assistance that we can provide from a bylaw perspective. So this becomes sort of a new way of doing business. I think it's certainly a good way to go, and probably will probably get compliance a lot faster and a lot better form when we've got that outside help. So it helps everybody.
And they're here to regionally serve. It's not that they're just out of Sanich. They're here for the greater Victoria region. Counselor Logan?
I'm not sure if Sherry had her hand up before me.
No, you did. You're always first.
Yeah. I'm wondering through you to Phil if we should pass this motion to at least give some authority should the other avenues not be successful. And so you're able to actually, instead of prolonging some resolution, but give you some teeth with the understanding that you would exercise some latitude to go down the route that with some help.
Again, that would be, that would probably be the prudent thing to do. It would be nice not to have to bring it back to council to revisit the same issue. But again, I'd like to try this strategy first, and that would be part and parcel of the motion.
Counselor Logan?
Thank you. I would support what Counselor Logan suggested. I wonder if it would be appropriate to put forward amendment to the recommendation suggesting that VHA contact be engaged in order to assist, or I'm not sure what it is.
Yeah, it won't be VHA. It'll be this special task force.
Okay. Support services engaged prior to take further action. My only question about that piece is, what is the timeline for you to be in touch with that person, and what is the timeline that we're allocating? And I know we may not know that tonight because we need to engage this person before they can engage with the inhabitant before next steps happen. So I'd like to see some timelines put around it.
I would imagine that putting this into play barring him being on vacation, that it would probably be a priority situation and be, you know, well-reported back before next, or by next council meeting.
Okay. So let's put that timeline in the amendment.
I just need some clarity on your amendment because I haven't heard the wording.
So do we need to?
There is enough. This is, oh, it's that within 14 days after delivery of the notification letter.
Okay, but if we keep this in place, but prior to that, when the first action...
First step, like I think what we're saying is first step would be to, and I just don't know the name of this response team.
Two separate things.
But it's a mental health response team, community response team or something like that.
We could just call them Support Services, Madam Mayor, as a way to identify them for now. Do we know their name?
So first step? The first step to be engaging?
Support services?
Support services to assist in, you know, rectifying the problem identified prior to bylaw proceeding with the 14-day, with what's in place there already. I think the only thing we need to add in there is that there needs to be a report back by the 15th of the month or bylaw...
Well, I think you'll have that in...
Bylaw needs to have, you know, I'm just trying to put timelines in it so that something actually gets done.
Yeah, why don't we just say that by, report back by next council on September 19th? That should be enough time.
September what?
Isn't it 19th?
I think, next council's eighth.
Oh, the eighth, sorry.
So, I mean, we'll have had contact with the, I'm trying to get a response sooner than that, like by the end of meeting.
Oh, okay.
So what's appropriate for a time then?
End of September.
End of September, probably our September 29th meeting.
Very well, and that would be keeping in with sort of that standard 30-day stretch anyway. So...
Prior to pursuing the unsightly premises bylaw, blah, blah, action. Did you get that, Mark?
That sounds fair.
Is it going to be one or two?
So two parts. So the first part will be, yeah, that we, well, actually ahead of it because we're going to do the first part and contact Support Services.
I just thought that the city engaged Support Services to assist the owner in conjunction with bylaw enforcement and to report to the September 29th council.
Yeah. And then, and then this part, you know, if that doesn't, you know, get resolution or we need to take a stronger step to things, you know, then we'll have 14 days after that, and it'll all be done.
Yeah, exactly.
We're good?
So part two is as written, right?
Yeah. Yeah. We're going to get one right now.
I'll second.
There we go. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Thank you.
Three to one for Shamrocks. I don't understand it. It was created.
Oh, they're over in Vancouver, aren't they?
The Colwood Shamrocks.
Item 6.3 TPI, 6.3.1, verbal update, city engineer in regards to the dam on private property, 740 Beckshill Road.
So this dam is, the problem with the dam initially started as it was flooding the neighbor's crawl space, and that really is a private matter. However, it didn't seem to be getting resolved, and thankfully... to be getting resolved. And thankfully, we've now managed to actually get the owner of the property with the dam on it, and the owner of the adjacent property together with us, the mayor, CAO, and myself, for a walk around the property, and they've agreed to give us access to both properties to look into the problem in more detail. As we visited the property and been able to spend more time beating our way through the thick brush to actually look at the dam and to talk more about the history of the dam, it's become clear that this dam, although it's never been dry before, has dried out fairly quickly in recent years. And that would indicate that the dam is possibly becoming porous, and the amount of vegetation growing on the dam would support that. You would expect that to happen. So, more familiarity with the dam is increasing concern about its safety, which of course is a problem for the people downstream, not for the two properties we were originally dealing with. And so, we are currently trying to figure out what the best solution is, what the cost would be. I initially had an idea about how we might be able to solve this before I went away on holiday, but further survey has shown that that's not going to work. And staff have come up with a different solution. We're going to have a final walk-around and see if we can come up with a cost estimate on that in time for the next council meeting. And then, at the next council meeting, there will be a report outlining the entire situation, repeating most of what I've said, plus a cost estimate and presentation to council of a decision of what, how do you wish to get involved in this. I think that's covered everything.
I just want to point out that it's very important that that report does come forward at the earliest meeting of council in September, as where that window of opportunity to be able to work up there is soon closing with winter and fall approaching with the wetter weather. So, just a point of fact that, you know, we do need to proceed quite quickly on this.
Counselor, one?
Thank you, and I'm sure it's safe to assume that you've been in contact with both owners, and they're both happy with the progress to date.
Well, I think we were all hoping that we would be bringing the report to this meeting, but we haven't been able to do that, because the initial idea didn't work out. We had to come up with a different solution. And I haven't talked to them since I got back. I only got back today. But certainly, our staff have been visiting the site and talking to them.
Just to follow up through the mayor, I just think, given history and, you know, recent meetings that we've had with both owners, we're on a positive track, and I'd just really like to see that continue. So, I always choose to operate under the no-surprise rule as much as I can, and I just don't, I don't think we want to have any surprises here either.
Might I suggest that the Director of Engineering contact both property owners tomorrow, and let them know of the course of action?
All good. Received the report? So moved. Second, all those in favor? Both, thank you. 6.3.2, 2013 corporate emissions summary.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, this is something that you've all seen before, because we now do it year on, year on, year. So, as a community, the city has endorsed the province's target of reducing its community-wide emissions by 33 percent by 2020. But in addition, as we're signatories to the Climate Action Charter, we also made a commitment to be carbon-neutral in respect of our own operations by 2012. We haven't actually got there yet. The way that those communities who have achieved full carbon neutrality do it is they reduce their emissions as much as possible, and then they buy offsets that compensate for their remaining emissions. But so far, we've chosen not to do that. We've chosen to actually take some of that money and invest it in some of our own operations to do things that reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So, it kind of goes around. However, the good news is that we have reduced, since 2007, overall, we've reduced our greenhouse gas emissions by about 32 percent, which is, I think, fairly impressive. And that includes both Colwood's own emissions, but also our share of the West Shore Parks and Rec emissions, which are also very significant. They're about this kind of the same, sort of the cities are about the same as West Shore Parks and Recs. So, as we have done previously, committee recommended to council and ISO move that council reaffirm its 2010 instruction to all staff to constantly seek and report to council on ways to reduce the city's energy costs and greenhouse gas production, wherever that can result in a lifecycle cost-saving, particularly in relation to the use of vehicles, fuels, and natural gas.
Second. Conversation, discussion, seeing none, call the question, all those in favor? Posed, motion carries. Item 6.3.3, request for extension of transit shelter agreement.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, you're probably wondering why it's a two-year extension that only takes us to 2015, and that's because we're already a year into it. So, we're a little late getting in on this one. But the good news is, excuse me, that this is a deal that actually makes us some money, not tons and tons of money, but a little over $7,000. So, we have bus shelters in the city, some of which Patterson Outdoor Advertising sort of own and manage, and some that are BC Transit. BC Transit ones have been going through various upgrades recently, but they don't make us any money. But these ones do, and it was nice, we had the fellow there from Patterson at the TPI meeting, and he was very supportive, very much kind of looking forward to sort of, how can we help you? How can we make this partnership better? And, you know, we also got into discussion around, not only might Patterson be interested in looking at taking on more of the shelters in this community, but we also got into a conversation. Those of you who've been around for a while will remember that we entered into a deal with a, I think, a company in Ontario, wasn't it, to do the bus benches. And, let's just say, I'm not a huge fan. But anyway, I believe that was a three-year agreement. So, one of the things that we discussed is, we should actually check into whether that three-year agreement has actually come to an end, and roll that into our thinking about, do we want to continue that, or do we want to do something different? So, it was recommended by committee and ISO move that the CAO be authorized to enter into a two-year agreement, extension of the agreement with Patterson Outdoor Advertising to August 5th, 2015, and that staff investigate future shelter and bench agreements, including branding the shelters and benches through color and logo, and bring back to the committee further discussion.
Second.
Counselor Day?
Thanks. Maybe it would be wonderful if you would let us know when you are discussing that again at TPI at IACTI, because they would very much like to give some feedback on what works for people, persons with disabilities, because bus shelters are vitally important to people with disabilities who may be waiting in the rain or the wind for a bus, and it'd be great to see more shelters that could be successful for all members of the public.
Counselor Logan?
Thank you, Worship. I think I wouldn't be speaking out of turn if I said that the committee was actually quite impressed with the representative from Patterson, who was more than willing to work with the city and staff to kind of personalize these bus shelters, because they realized that it's just as important for them to look good for them as it is for us as a community. And I do have one question, perhaps the staff, and that was on the number two recommendation. When would we expect to have some indication on the agreement, when it expires? Because I think that decision was made previous council, and so if it's three years, then it's up.
Sorry, I didn't quite follow the question.
The number two of the recommendation, that's staff to investigate future shelter and bench agreements. So, the committee wanted to know when the existing one with those god-awful benches expires?
Yeah.
So, we could, we could look at other alternatives. So, when do you expect that that will be coming to committee? I guess that's what I'm saying.
The next visit to committee, I would expect, would be the beginning of October.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Counselor Logan?
That could be your next platform, Gordy.
I'm hoping to get rid of those platforms, because they suck.
Your mic's not on. I just want to remind counsel that one of our staff, Helen, actually spoke regarding the bench contract, which I asked, I think it was back in June, and it's 2015, from what I recall, that she said that the bench contract expires, because I would like to get rid of them faster than, sooner than later, too. I guess my only question would be that, is what we have our only option with respect to bus shelters, you know, and obviously accommodating those with disabilities? But some creativity, I mean, Colwood is putting a foot forward to be creative and, I don't know, set some higher standards, that sort of thing. And I think it was in Toronto where they installed a bus shelter, but it had swings in it. But I'm just, you know, I'm just suggesting something that be creative and funky, you know, as we go to redo what will be known as, you know, Royal Colwood Boulevard or something sooner than later than Suk Road. But, I don't know, just an opportunity to be innovative and think outside the box. I think it's an opportunity, if the Patterson group was receptive, and, you know, I'm sure they're looking to, you know, highlight their profile as well. So, I just leave that with staff to, you know, let's be a little adventurous and creative.
That's pretty far outside the box.
What's that?
I just, that's pretty far outside the box. Thank you. You've set a new bar.
That's why we have our council meetings, we can be swinging on that. We'll get the public around.
I know there is a problem with the bench design that we have, and, you know, I've seen it on a number of occasions in the wintertime, because they retain the water in them, they don't drain well. So, people don't sit on them, you know, they perch on the back or lean against them. So, they're inefficient and not well-used. So, something to be looking at. But you can go look at them, there's no drain holes in it, they're kind of grooved, so the water lays in a trough in seats. So, it's not well-designed.
Madam Mayor, is there an opportunity, or what is the penalty to end that contract sooner than later? Do we know? Like, let's find it out. If there's no penalty, or, you know, if it's within six months or whatever, let's do it in tandem with, you know, let's check out all our opportunities, because nobody, I think, sitting at the table is supportive of what we've got today.
And then, what is the money that, I mean, although it's not a huge amount of money, what, where does that go into, just our general revenue? Is it streamlined towards something? Does anybody know?
It's not earmarked for anything specific. It's just within your general operating budget. So, you could consider it offsets taxation revenue to a very nominal degree.
Yeah, I mean, you know, one of the things that comes to mind is, we always struggle, you know, each year on crosswalk costs for safe crossings, you know, and I think that bill runs about $7,000 annually. You know, it might be a nice way to neutralize a cost tied into something, but again, need a bit more look and see how that might work or fit with things. So, where are we then? If we are going to explore options, are we looking to continue to extend this advertising, or do you want to consider putting this off till next meeting while we can get more information?
Thank you. I think it would be appropriate to leave the recommendation the way it is, so that we continue the agreement that we already have and it's already in place. But really where the discussion was is, okay, let's put together the new package and explore what's possible under that. And I think that works quite well with the timing, with the bench contract coming up, you know, looking at maybe including more of the BC Transit shelters, having a look at some ideas around IACTI. So, I think probably the wording is appropriate, as is.
And just one further thing, Madam Mayor, and that is, rather than waiting until the contract is up, whether we can end it earlier or not, how can we go about succinctly finding out what other options are there, so that we can do it in a timely fashion, as opposed to waiting till the end, and now, okay, well, now we need another six months in order to figure it out? Can we start the process of, you know, I don't know that we RFP it, but tender it, or whatever it is, that we, the process we go through to attain the benches, or have somebody put the benches in, and start that now versus waiting until 2015? I can't remember the exact date that Helen said, but anyways, just so it's a timely...
I think that's the idea of staff investigating it now, not, we're not saying, push it off, we're actually saying, so I think that's in there.
Okay. So, we're all good? Anybody else? Call the question then, all those in favor? Posed, motion carried? 6.3.4, deposit requirements by other municipalities with regard to oversized vehicles on municipal roads.
Thank you. So, when we have oversized vehicles going through our roads, we, there is a charge for that. And there was a discussion at TPI, and as a part of that, we requested that staff take a look at what other municipalities were doing and come back with information. So, that was the discussion that happened at TPI in July. What we did was sort of do quite an extensive look at what City of Victoria, District of Sanich, City of Langford, and also Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure did, which was, I think, really all over the map, probably covers it. But we tended to be on the high side. And so, we ended up in discussions of sort of, was it appropriate to look at some kind of fee structure that was basically for the level of fee concurrent with the level of risk? In other words, if you were not very oversized, then really the fee is very minimal, as opposed to something incredibly large, which might carry a greater risk, which might carry a greater deposit to be involved. We also had the discussion at committee, which said, should we be looking in some way at some kind of intermunicipal permit, because we recognize that somebody could be, you know, traveling through Suk, then through Langford, then through Colwood, then through, you know, and so the folks involved in this would end up having to talk to a number of different municipalities, all of with different fees, different insurance requirements, et cetera, et cetera. So, it was recommended by committee, and ISO move that staff prepare an amendment to bylaw number 1134, Traffic and Highways Regulation bylaw, to change the fixed deposit for an oversized vehicle to a variable deposit by creating a table format of fees, which increases with the increase in the over width or over height measurement. Second, that staff investigate the possibility of having the city added as an additional named insured on the insurance of transporters of oversized vehicles. And three, that staff investigate the possibility of an intermunicipal permit to move oversized loads, oversized loads through several municipalities.
Second.
Counselor Day?
I'm just wondering if this takes into account the large B-trains that come through Colwood to the depot on Nob Hill Road?
I don't believe those require a permit, because I think they're all legal. Regular B-trains, they're legal on the roads.
So, there's no, there's, they're not, even though they're, they're super long and...
Yeah.
Super dangerous. Well, they are. They're going into a creek.
I think the weight that's distributed over the axles makes the difference, even though you have that length and extra weight, it's distributed differently on those axles, which makes it legal.
Yeah.
Well, there's been increasing weights for gravel dump trucks, for example, where they have the three axles now. It does not change the fact that they are carrying huge amounts of weights over our roads, which is causing potential degradation of our roadways. But what I was more concerned about was the possible environmental damage from a... But what I was more concerned about was the possible environmental damage from a spill or something unsafe. So, I was just wondering if this was contemplated, if that captured this as well?
I'm not aware that we have any authority to deal with things like that.
I think, Counselor Day, that there was that incident in on Nob Hill where that truck lost, was not, was improperly parked, ended up into the creek below, and Minister of Environment stepped in immediately. They were on there, and I think they would take jurisdiction in something like that.
Oh, you will, yeah.
So, what, like, what sorts of vehicles does this apply to now that we see in our community?
These are all oversized, over height, overweight permits, so they're vehicles that don't meet legally.
Like the gas tanker that comes through that heads to the gas station?
No, they're all legal, yeah.
So, the over, like, the bigger, like, the house moving?
Yeah, they're often house moves, every one of those vehicles that pulled one of those big pieces of equipment down into Royal Bay Pit and then out again, they all required permits.
A new car offload at Jenner?
No, it's all totally legal.
Within realm, okay, just trying to get a concept of what we're targeting on this? Anybody else? Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Report Deputy Director of Engineering, Wishart Sidewalk Improvements Project Update.
Thank you, I'll just get way back from this microphone, so I don't feedback my guitar through it. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, this report is on the second phase of Wishart and Carondele, I guess the Wishart Sidewalk, not the Wishart and Carondele intersection. As you're all aware, the Wishart, sorry. As you're all aware, the Wishart and Carondele Phase One was over budget, and we had some issues with tracking that and where to go with that, and so we feel that we've addressed a lot of those issues in this one. So, the resolution was that the Engineering Department, with cooperation from the Finance Department, undertakes improvements to estimating and cost tracking in general, and particularly with regards to Public Works Division. And we have done that, was working with Rebecca on that, and I have, I have the, I have a draft document here that we've been working from and working through this project with. Happy to report that the project went from, I guess, about ninety-five percent to ninety-nine percent complete today. We got the line painting in, the paving's complete, the planting, I think Gore just has half of one of the beds left, and then we're looking at the possibility of maybe including a tiny bit more work while still staying under the, what I promised here, which was ten to fifteen thousand dollars under budget for this. Looks great, I think the people have done a really good job, I think the team that we had on this was really interesting, and the fact that Rob, who you were talking with earlier today, you know, Rob and Ross and Rhonda, and you go on and on and through it, everybody had a contribution to it, the guys on the street had contributions to it, and into the final look of it. And it kind of evolved while still staying under budget, and everyone has a sense of ownership of it, and I think it was really a positive team effort on how that whole thing came out. And it was definitely a better project as a result of having all of that input into it and still managing that input. So, that was pretty good. Let me see, what more can I say about that? Yes, we did, saw the opportunity to kind of renew that entire road, since the one side had been rebuilt or repaved, resurfaced, I should say, a few years back, I'm not quite sure when, but it was when the water main was put in or sewer main was put in. And so, we had the bike lanes that we had just added and the sidewalk work, and there was the one lane that was remaining that was in pretty rough shape. And so, we checked with the budget and found that we had money left in the road overlay budget, and so we took money from that and had the estimate really tight, so we, you know, we weren't using any of that money to do this project. We made sure of that, and so that was, we got that entire thing completed. Initially, there were some problems, there's some concerns from the residents about the tightness of the corner onto Ackland itself, because we went to a six-point-five meter width of that road, which is a recommendation in the transportation plan. And as it was being constructed, of course, you know, it's dug in quite a lot narrower than that, and that was quite rough, and there was some construction hoarding and barricades there. And so, we were getting a number of complaints, so we went out and we put a notice in all the mailboxes of everyone that lives on that street, and we had a meeting with them, I believe it was August 7th, or July 31st. Anyway, we had a meeting out there, and there were eighteen residents that showed up, and they were quite concerned, and we let them vent about it and listen to what they had to say, and came up with a good compromise where we, where we said, let us just finish it off and see what you think of it, and so they were amenable to that. In fact, we said, you know, give us a couple of weeks, and they said, well, why don't we wait until October, so we got a good chance? So, they proposed that we wait a little longer. So, we're going to do that and let it go and see how they like it. Already, as you go around the corner, it's so much easier now that it's paved and line-stripped than that, so we'll see what comes back, but I think they're going to have a positive feel about it, we'll see. So, let me see, the nice part about that is, if we do decide that we need to widen it, what we would do in that case is we would take out a section of curb, but there's no sidewalk right next to that curb. There's actually a fairly large rain garden, which is, was, garden, I should say, which was, again, one of the staff members saw an opportunity to put that garden there, so we did. But the beauty of that is, if we have to move the curb and do a little bit of paving, we don't have to rip out a bunch of sidewalk and relay the sidewalk, it's, we just make a garden a little bit smaller, so we estimate that would cost between two thousand and twenty-five hundred dollars to fix and still keep us under budget. So, we can listen to the neighborhood, see what they think of it. If they, you know, if they still feel strongly about it, we'll bring it forward to TMPI somewhere or another and make that recommendation. Also, out of this, you see the Ellendale Greenway kind of growing and growing and growing as it goes, and that's something that's in the transportation plan that isn't approved yet, that we're already building, so that transportation plan's moving forward before it even moves forward. And that, we took the grindings from one project and did the first part from Mountview, and then the grindings from this project went into it. And that's been a good savings, because the grindings from Mountview, if I remember correctly, it was going to cost about seven thousand dollars to take them away. And so, we saved that seven thousand dollars, and we're building a trail, which would have cost us probably seven thousand dollars to get the material to build the trail, so rather than pay twice for it, we're not paying at all for it, we're just using it. So, again, that's just some other innovations that have come forward. So, with that, I leave it for questions.
Receive for information, oh, counsel?
I move that we receive it for information, and I just wanted to say, job well done, because it does look very nice. I received a lot of comments from the public that I've been traveling with, who have noticed the changes, and I think it does look very nice.
Second vote.
Are we adding in the second point of staff recommendation?
Both parts?
The report on this project brought to TPI, one staff matched the residents in October.
Yep, all in one. Staff?
I just want to thank staff for their cooperation, working together with the multi-departments on this project, keeping in line with the budget and the timeline constraints. Further to the narrowing of that road, that, again, was done in trying to resolve an issue that those local residents had with speeding on that road, so hopefully this will be very effective in reducing the speed that travelers around that corner onto Ackland, so very encouraged.
Just, I just wanted to echo some of that, I had a chance to drive past it the other day, and I think it looks really nice, so, and I haven't seen it today, so now I have to go back again. Yeah, well done.
It's quite a lot nicer with the line painting, certainly.
Call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Moving into bylaws, bylaw number 1550, first, second, and third readings on City of Colwood Subdivision and Development Bylaw, nineteen ninety-five, amendment number forty-nine.
Move introduction.
Can somebody remind me what this is about?
Yeah.
My summer brain is stuck in screen.
This is a housekeeping bylaw to align a rezoning that happened with our subdivision servicing bylaw, the way that bylaw's set up, and it's kind of an antiquated way to do things, is that every time a zone is created, it has to be included in the subdivision servicing bylaw.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Your second?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Who's that?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Same set of orders, first, second, and third readings on bylaw number 151, City of Colwood Subdivision Development Bylaw Number 1995, Amendment Number Fifty.
Move introduction.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Move second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Move through.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Moving into seven point three, bylaw number 1541, final reading on Colwood Main Sewer Local Area Service Bylaw, Establishment and Loan Authorization Bylaw Number 598, 2001, Amendment Number Twenty-One.
Move final?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Final again on bylaw number 1542, Colwood Main Sewer Local Area Service Bylaw, Establishment and Loan Authorization Number 598, 2001, Amendment Number Twenty-Two.
Move final?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Final reading again on Colwood Main Sewer Local Area Service Bylaw, bylaw number 1544, Number 598, 2001, Amendment Number Twenty-Three.
Move final?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Motion to move in camera?
So moved.
All those in favor?